August twenty first, twenty twenty five, Trotwood Regular Meeting. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education and Public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and not to be considered a public community meeting. Ms. Adams, would you please call the row?
Yes. Mrs. Cherry?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Leagues? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Adams, would you please read our mission statement?
Yes. The mission of the Trotwood Madison City Schools is to graduate all students prepared to excel in a global society with a commitment to lifelong learning by guaranteeing a challenging curriculum facilitated by an innovative and dedicated staff, community participation, and state-of-the-art resources in a stimulating atmosphere.
Thank you. Next on our agenda. I need a motion to adopt the agenda. Are there any changes?
Yes, I do have a few changes this evening. The first change will be denoted under Discussion Items. I would like to add an Item B. Vouchers Hurt Ohio Request. The second item will be under Superintendent's Report. E Personnel Agenda. I would like to replace the Personnel Agenda with an updated Personnel Agenda. A hand-carried agenda that I will give each one of you here shortly. And then the last item will be denoted as Item Twelve. We will add, I'd like to add, an Executive Session at the end of the Board Comics prior to adjournment. And those are the only changes I had this evening.
I need a motion to adopt the agenda with the changes.
My second.
It's been moved to Second. Ms. Adams, would you please call the row?
Yes. Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes. Motion passes. Next on our agenda is a presentation. Do we have any? Yes.
Is it Dream Big Youth Travel?
Yes.
Michael White.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
How are you?
Good.
My name is Michael White. I am the co-founder of Dream Big Youth Travel. This is our twenty-third year of taking students on college and educational tours all over the country. Me and my wife are former educators. We, well, we're still educators, but we're not in the classroom or in the school building. We have over thirty years of experience through, came through the college level. Our goal is to partner with Trotwood Madison and increase the students' awareness of different college opportunities, scholarships, and our, another goal is to have them graduate with little to no debt. And how do we do that? With exposure early and often. We start taking students on college tours in third grade. We start taking fifth graders overnight. Up until three years ago, we did more middle school and elementary college tours than high school tours. So, our goal is always to expose and expose often. I always tell students, you can always come home, so let's see what's out there. I'm a Trotwood Madison graduate from second grade to the twelfth grade. Went to Hampton University for architecture. I went to Central State for secondary education. And my thing is always, I didn't get a chance to, to visit and so forth when I was in school, so my thing is, we have a lot of great scholars that are talented in our, in the school system here, and we just want them to see what's out there. As you all can see, Board members, that they, we have our tours there. Now, those are based, because I, we're based in metro Atlanta, but we're partnering with schools in New Orleans and Los Angeles and Inglewood and North Carolina, Florida, and other parts of Indiana as well. But our thing is, I want to do something special for Trotwood. We want to also give scholarships to your graduates. But I guarantee you, because I had a system when I was a teacher of seniors, that we can increase scholarship dollars for our seniors, and we can increase the number of students getting in college a, as well. I was at a school that was ninety percent free and reduced lunch, and we got, we were able to secure, at least my class was able to secure millions of dollars, at least six million dollars in a five-year period with our students. So, our, our thing is, I, I know that we have a system that works for students and parents, but we want to give information and give students that opportunity to see there. These are, as you, as you all look at the flyer, you see those different things, but we basically can cater to any tours that you all want that you might not see there. We're again out of Georgia, so we, we don't get as many Midwest requests, but we can do Ohio, Indiana, Michigan, and different things like that. But we love taking students to, bringing students to Washington DC. They get to see the colleges there, the Smithsonian's and so forth, as well as visiting the Capitol and taking a tour of the Capitol Building and meeting our representatives. One thing that I feel that we need is to get more of our students involved in cities. So, we put some different things together where we can have students visiting their representatives there in DC when we visit DC as well. Not only do they visit colleges, but we have fun as well. When we go to Florida, we take them to the Everglades. We go Rollerstake. We do Dave and Buster's. We do a number of different things that when they're out in LA, we gotta go to Roscoe's Chicken and Waffles and, and see Hollywood and different things like that. So, our tours are all-inclusive. Every educator that goes as a chaperone, their, their price is, is complimentary as well, but those are the things. Basically, what happens is the school picks where they want to go and what date they want to travel, and we take it from there. We're with you at all times. Basically, the teachers or the, the chaperones, all they have to do is just show up. We do everything for you. Book everything and from your venues to your colleges to your restaurants and different, and, and different things like that. Transportation, if they're flying or if it's a charter bus, we do that for the students. The big thing is when a lot of, especially our young men, they always would say, well, I really might not be, I'm not interested in college. But when we take them, my biggest thing was always trying to get them to a homecoming game. And then they would get excited seeing the band, the Greek life, the different things like that. And a lot of times, they realize, you know what? It's not like K through twelve. So, those are some of our goals and what we want to do with Trotwood. Again, we, we want to expose them early and often. We want to make, enable them to see what's out there and get as much information so they can graduate with little to no debt. And we want to increase the number of students at Trotwood that are going to school as well. So. That's pretty much it.
Mr. White, are these prices here current with regards to?
They are, but it would be less for Trotwood because we're further, those are prices based out of metro Atlanta.
Okay.
We're closer to DC and other cities here compared to Atlanta, metro Atlanta. And since I really, I graduated from Trotwood, the prices will be less because I want our, our, the students here to experience the different cities and the colleges and so forth.
And the tours generally take place over the spring break or?
Spring break. I have a hundred kids coming in in a few weeks from LA to Norfolk State versus Hampton, but they'll visit other colleges. But they pick the dates. The schools pick the dates. Some schools we can do on weekends because we have students and, and, and we have representatives there that will, most of the time, they don't, but we have students that are willing to give us tours on Saturdays.
I know you mentioned homecoming season, and that's during the school year.
Yeah, well, the schools, some of the schools that we've been doing in the, for the past few years have, they've gone during their spring break, but they've seen me post different things about going to the football games and seeing the band and different things. So now they're like, we want to go in the fall so our kids can get more of a, a real feel for that campus and the campus life. But we definitely, we're open to any dates that you all have. A lot of students will, a lot of schools will go on a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, or Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and so forth like that.
I have a question.
Yes.
Do you assist with like a payment plan?
Yes, we have payment plans. Basically, we do two payments unless they're flying. Typically, if it's overnight, we ask for a hundred dollar deposit in thirty to forty days before the date, say you're going in April. Your balance will be, your second payment or your balance would be due thirty days before we travel. And again, we have, for every ten students, you get, you get a complimentary chaperone, and they're from that school. And that's everywhere we, I'm sorry, that's everywhere we travel, whether it's California, whether it's New York, whether it's coming to Atlanta, Nashville, or, or anywhere. We just had a group of students, my thing is seeing stuff, we had a group of students from Fort Lauderdale. We just took them to Houston a few weeks ago. We were able to ride horses with them. That was their first time, and they were saying, we never thought, did the college tours, but again, we always want to do something that's different. And we do STEM trips, STEM-related, STEAM-related as well. Fort Valley in, in Georgia has a program just for middle schools. And if they get in that program, ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade, they get to go to school for free. It's called the CEDAP program there. If they're pre-med, Havana Cuba has a program that's totally free for students that want to go into medical field. It's been around for years, and what happens is the kids come back here for summertime, but they are, they go there, they're trained in Havana, and a lot of our students in metro areas of the country have been doing this for years, and they have, it's a totally free medical program. But that CEDAP program, the students, they partner with Georgia Tech, UNLV, Fort Valley, and another school in New Orleans. And if the students stay in that program for their four years of high school, they get to go to any of those schools for free as well. But we have a number of different things we want to bring to Trotwood for my years of just, just programs that colleges have that are trying to engage our students and so forth as well. If they're interested in aviation, Tuskegee has this brand-new program for students starting in middle school that want to learn anything in aviation as well.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
Next on our agenda, I will need a motion to enter into Executive Session to prepare for conduct or review negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment per ORC one-two-one-point-two-two-G4. Action may be taken.
My second.
It's been moved to Second. Ms. Adams, will you call the row?
Yes. Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes. Motion passes. We will enter into Executive Session at five forty-four.
Twenty twenty five through July thirtieth, twenty twenty six with a salary exception. Salary increases for this group will reflect a three percent increase for one year, zero percent increase year two, and zero percent increase year three of the negotiated agreement.
My motion.
On second.
Your second.
It's been moved in second. Ms. Adams, would you please call the row?
Yes, Ms. Carrington?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes, the motion passes. Item number D, approval of appointing a delegate in alternate to the twenty twenty five OSBA annual business meeting. Mr. Lumpkin.
So the motion would be up for Mr. Lumpkin to serve as the delegate.
So I need a motion to appoint Mr. Lumpkin as the delegate for the OSBA annual business meeting.
All right, move. On second.
It's been moved, Ms. Adams, would you please call the row?
Yes. Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes, motion passes. Next is the Troywood CIC update. Do you have any?
There are a couple of updates from CIC. Pertaining to the school district, there we are convening about reopening conversations with the new businesses about mentorship programs and apprenticeship programs so that students that want to go directly into the workforce will be able to actually intern in some of the companies that are opening in Troywood, Beyonce, and Westrofo. So one is they make commercial converters, so high paying jobs that our students can be able to access. should be able to access. And CIC also has movement in the Troywood Sears location, um, there's going to be a small business incubator that opens there, and, um, there's interest in, you know, Troywood Madison.
Do you have any, um, dates for Sears?
They, they just got under two million dollar tax credits, um, the two, the historical tax credit, so, um, construction and moving businesses soon is going to happen, um, after the first year in the spring.
I'm in the spring.
Does anyone have any questions in reference to the CIC update?
Are we looking at a timeframe for the students to get internships with the businesses?
Same timeframe.
Next spring?
Yeah, next spring. So there's going to be a grand opening for that, um, in September, and then, you know, people are going to start talking to them while reopening. What has been happening is that they've just been giving us five thousand dollars with, you know, the tax credit, I mean, the tax abatements that we gave for that, that literally like giving the district a little. And, um, but we have to understand though that we're going to have to have programming in the school to get the kids ready to be able to go in and have those internships and prepare them, so, the students get ready to have some of those conversations.
Thank you.
Next, on our agenda, uh, number five is the consent agenda. I need approval for student activity purpose statement and budget, Troywood Madison High School, J R O T C. I was, okay. An approval of the determination of schools in practical to transport list of schools for twenty twenty five through twenty twenty six. Approval of the resolution to update hiring bonuses, bonus to include additional special education personnel. And I need, I need a motion for, who's saying, all three, all of them.
I do have a question.
Yes.
On the approval for, uh, for the list for transportation, do we look to see what the cost difference was if we just said we want to businate in Troywood Madison, and we were cutting a check to anybody who made the school choice of going somewhere else?
Not, not yet. We did talk about that, so what's going to have to happen is we have already committed, uh, from last year, we've already committed to transporting, I think, four schools right now. Once we get a, um, a finalized list of those students that attend those, those four schools, then we can really see what those numbers would be with regards to the kids that attend these schools that are enrolled, that were declaring impractical, and then the actual number of kids that we transport. And then, once we get that list, and, and we'll usually have a finalized list in, um, November, we can just kind of see how much that actual cost would be.
So it would be like, if we were to decide to do that, we would follow the schools?
So it'll have to be the following school.
Yeah.
Be- because we have not notified those schools that, we, we've got one school, we transported, we transported thirty, thirty plus kids, and, um, they, they would, that school would definitely contest that, and again, it'll be something that we, we'd have to discuss and talk about, but we had already, we had, we would have missed the deadline for notifying that, that school that we would have declared impractical.
What is that deadline?
Uh, thirty days from the, like, the last day of school. It's, it's something like that. I can, I can get it more specific, but it's, it's a thirty day window from like their last day of school, or prior to the first day of school. It's something like that. It, it's divided in, in, um, in O R C.
So, if we were to do it, we would have to do it before the thirty days, do they still have the right to contest?
Yes.
Okay, yes. And long-term, so proof that we gave all of those students five hundred, whatever dollars, we could cut off the transportation service?
It's, it's a little more intricate process than that. It would be, uh, there's an actual appeal hearing that those parents will have the right to, to, uh, to request. With this group that we declare, it's a lot easier because precedent has been set that we don't transport, say for instance, Chaminade Julian High School, or they have such a limited number of kids, five kids, four kids, two kids, one kid. So, those folks just understand, they have an understanding, but one school in particular that I'm speaking of, they, they have a large number of kids, and they will, they'll galvanize their parents, and they will follow through with the appeal process, and then that's something that we would have to go back and forth on. But until a hearing takes place and a ruling is determined, we're still responsible for transport. So it may be six months.
Choice.
Any other questions in reference to the consent agenda? I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
My motion.
Second.
Ms. Adams, it's been properly moved in second, will you call the row, please?
Yes. Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes, motion passes for the consent agenda. Next up, item number six is the treasurer's report.
Okay. Um, you have in front of you the minutes from the June fifth special meeting, the work session meeting and minutes from June twenty sixth that we need to approve tonight.
I need a motion to approve the June fifth, twenty twenty five special meeting and the work session meeting minutes from June twenty twenty six.
My motion.
My second.
It's been moved in second. Mrs. Adams, would you call the row?
Yes. Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes, motion passes for the June fifth and the June twenty twenty six, um, meeting minutes. Next, we need approval for Ju- July seventeenth, twenty twenty five special meeting minutes and regular meeting minutes.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second. Ms. Adams, would you call the row?
Yes. Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes, motion passes. Next is the approval of then and now Johnson Controls.
So we, just to explain this a little bit, we had, um, an invoice come in for Johnson Controls, but the purchase order had been closed at the end of the fiscal year, so the invoice is dated bef- and then the purchase order date is after that, and because of the amount, it requires board approval for us to pay.
I think so.
I need approval, you have a question?
I would like to review that. What is the amount?
Fifteen thousand, four, twenty, six, three, two. And that was for the?
Those are for the metal detectors at the middle school and the high school.
Mm-hmm. Fifteen thousand, four, twenty-four, sixty-six. And that is the monitoring, yearly monitoring fee for the metal detectors in the high school and middle school, two with the high school and two with the middle school.
I'll second. It's been moved to second. Mrs. Adams, would you call the row?
Yes. Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes, motion passes. Next, item D, approval of Board of Education compensation for retreat held on July twelfth, twenty twenty five. I need a motion?
A motion.
Ms. Adams, it has been moved in second, will you call the row?
Yes. Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes, motion passes for the compensation from July the twelfth. Item number E, approval of July twenty twenty five financial reports.
Okay, you, um, have, have the same three reports that you approve every month. Um, one of them is our cash reconciliation, so our bank account balance at the end of July was five million, two hundred thirty-two thousand, seven hundred sixty-nine dollars and forty-four cents, and, um, the next section would include our investment balances. We did have a finance committee meeting this evening, and we talked, we had, we had talked about, and you had worked with Janice in a previous meeting, to transfer all of our investments to Red Tree. You'll see that, um, Fifth Third Investments and Huntington Securities are, are empty, so those were transferred to Red Tree. The key bank investments did not get transferred before the end of the month, so next month, that should, that should happen. That's one that you had to take special action on. And so, if you look, then, um, outstanding checks and adjustments come next. Our adjusted bank balance is twenty-five million, two hundred seventy-three thousand, forty-two dollars, eleven cents, and our district balance in the system, um, the meta system, is the same at twenty-five million, two hundred seventy-three thousand dollars, two hundred seventy-three, then, twenty-five million, two hundred seventy-three thousand, forty-two dollars and eleven cents. We also have the spending plan summary, so the money that you see reflected there are the payments that we've received just in this first month of the year, uh, most of our foundation payments and our expenditures, and then you have the checks over one thousand dollars. We did have brief discussion in our meeting about the checks to Sinclair, Bowling Green, and U D, and just talked about those are, um, scholarship payments going directly to the university for some of our students who receive scholarships in the spring. And so these are all for action tonight.
So I need a motion to approve the twenty twenty five financial reports.
I'll make the motion.
My second. Ms. Adams, it's been moved in second, will you call the row?
Yes. Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes. Motion passes. Next up, superintendent's report.
Thank you. I do have a few items this evening, all of which are for action. The first item is the approval of the federal food guidelines for participation in the National School Lunch Program. This is the board's, uh, yearly review and approval of the food guidelines allowing us, adherence to the food guidelines, excuse me, or allowing us to, to, uh, participate in the National School Lunch Program, which qualifies our district for, uh, one hundred percent free and reduced lunch based on the community provision of roughly around sixty-seven percent of the community qualifying for free and reduced lunch. At that number, sixty-seven percent, sixty-six, sixty-seven percent, that automatically qualifies one hundred percent of our students. Each year, the board has to approve, uh, that we are going to adhere to these standards. It's usually done before the school year starts, but because we, uh, we postponed or canceled our last meeting, we've moved it to this meeting for action, so I am asking for action on that this evening.
I need a motion to approve the federal food guidelines for participation in National School Lunch Program for school year twenty twenty six.
My motion.
My second.
Ms. Adams, it's been moved in second, will you call the row, please?
Yes. Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item I have is a approval of a donation to the Troywood Madison High School Football Program from the White Castle Purchasing Company. The White Castle Purchasing Company has donated two hundred and fifty dollars to the Troywood Madison High School Football Program, and I am requesting that the board accept that donation this evening.
Are there any questions? I need a motion to approve the donation for White Castle Purchasing Company.
My motion.
It's been moved in second, Ms. Allen, would you, I mean, I'm sorry, I said, Ms. Allen, I'm sorry. Mrs. Adams, would you call the row?
Yes. Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item I have is item C, is request to approve the student activity purpose statement and budget for Madison Park Elementary. If you look at your attachment, you will see all the details with regards to, uh, the activities, purpose statement, and the proposed budget for Madison Park Elementary. I'm asking for approval for that this evening as well.
Are there any questions? Need a motion? Motion? Mrs. Adams? It's been moved in second, will you call the row, please?
Yes. Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes, motion passes.
The next item I have is item D, approval of donations supporting the Rams Care Closet on your agenda, your digital agenda. You also have an attachment outlining or detailing those items and financial contributions with regards to the Rams Care Closet. I'm asking for approval for those items this evening.
Are there any questions in reference to the donations? No questions. I need a motion to approve the donations for the supporting, um, Rams Care Closet.
My motion.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second. Ms. Adams, would you call the row?
Yes. Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes, motion passes for the Rams Closet, Care Closet donation.
And the last item I have for approval this evening is the updated personnel agenda that we amended the agenda for. These new, this new personnel agenda is a hand carry with the updated rates based upon the board approved and the T M E A approved collective bargain agreement that we, we just voted on a few minutes ago. We could not put these rates on because it had not been approved by the board yet, so at this point, we are just updating these rates with some additional science of reading training individuals that are going on, that, excuse me, that have taken place. As you can see, as always, uh, one through eleven, separation of services, twelve through thirty-eight, those will be hires or appointments, changes in salary. Thirty-nine through forty-one, approval for payments, that is that science of reading. We should be just about closing out those payments for science of reading, and again, those, those costs are reimbursed by the state for the science of reading training. And then last are the supplemental appointments, and once again, these are all based on the, the new, the new, um, salary increase that the board just approved. I am asking for action on that this evening.
Wheream Gila had an opportunity to review the hand carry personnel agenda. Do you have any questions? No questions? I need a motion to approve the hand carry personnel agenda.
My motion.
I'll second.
Ms. Adams, it's been moved in second, would you call the row, please?
Yes. Mrs. Yes, Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes, with the exception of item thirty-two. That's abstaining from voting for item thirty-two.
I think you have, you have to abstain from the whole, the whole vote. Yeah, okay. Um, Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion passes. Next item up is discussion items updates.
Uh, the first discussion item is, uh, Mr. Ed?
Um, I wanted to talk about the Capitol Conference, and you have a handout at your seat. That is the Ohio School Board's Capitol Conference that happens in November. Um, and I do believe our a cappella group from the high school, Mrs. Allen nominated them to perform at this in the student showcase, so they'll be there. Um, I just wanted to point out that Ms. Potter gave you this document to fill out to let her know if you plan to attend and how many nights you'll need a room. This um, does book very quickly the hotels in the area, and it opens on September sixteenth at nine AM. And I think within an hour, everything is taken, so the sooner we know what everybody would like to do and can prepare for that, we'll be ready when that window opens. So, any questions about Capitol Conference, that's really just for information. And she does have on there, she'd like to have that back from you by August twenty-eighth if possible. You can send her the form back or send her an email with the information.
Thank you.
The, you guys got any questions? Okay, the next item I have is a document, first, I'd like you to reference document number one in your folder. I have received a request for the Board of Education to join the Ohio Coalition for Equity of Adequacy through the Vouchers Hurt Ohio Program. It has been uh, the request that I share this information from you, from William Phillips, who is the executive director of the Ohio Coalition of Equity and Adequacy. The Vouchers Hurt Ohio Program is a program that is a growing coalition of public school districts that have come together to sue the state over the unconstitutional and harmful Ed Choice private school voucher program. Uh, if you have uh, been paying attention to the news or paying attention to what's going on in um, in, in the state of Ohio with regards to vouchers, it's hard not to have missed or heard, not heard anything about it. There is a active coalition uh, within the state that is suing the state of Ohio in regards to how they have used vouchers over the, over the last several years specifically. My job as a superintendent is to give you this information and just to share it with you. And then what Mr. Phillips is asking the board to do is join this coalition via a board resolution or a board vote. There is a list on page five or six of this document that outlines all of the school districts in the state of Ohio, where the school boards have passed a resolution to join this um, this entity. And as you can see, there are several, several local districts that have joined. And what I am asking the board to do this evening is, not this evening, what I'm asking the board to do is to take this information this evening, spend a little time reviewing the information with regards to the Vouchers Hurt Ohio Program. There is a website, and our young gentleman is scrolling through the website as well, that gives more detailed information about what Vouchers Hurt Ohio is, what their mission is. And then it also talks about how districts join. One of the, the two steps are, there are two steps, one is to have the school board pass a resolution, and then the second is based on the enrollment, pay Vouchers Hurt Ohio, two dollars per people per year for joining the organization. So what I'm doing is giving you the information, and I'll have a conversation, a follow-up conversation with Mrs. Cherry, to uh, see if the board has any interest. Um, and then we'll, we'll, actually, you can't talk amongst each other. You can't talk amongst each other, what we could do is we could have, could have put it back on the agenda next meeting to see if you guys have any interest and, in a public session, session, make a determination on whether or not uh, Triwood Madison City Schools wants to, wants to join this, this policy group. And if so, uh, we can, uh, we can put a, put a resolution on to uh, to join or, or decline. Any questions? Okay. Right, that's all I have.
I'll see you next week.
Uh, next meeting, not next week, I'm sorry.
Next up, item number ten, board comments. Oh, I'm sorry, treasures comments.
Um, I would just like to say I'm very happy to be here in this first meeting, and um, one thing that has come across my plate, just in the last two weeks, we have received two different grants from um, the efforts of our, our own staff writing these grants, not grants that we just get as an entitlement. And so we received again the Ohio Arts Council grant in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred dollars for an artist in residence program that will be at Madison Park. And then at Westbrook Village, most recently, Ms. Cossey uh, received the Whole Kids Garden Grant, four thousand five hundred dollars, so she'll be doing even more gardening at um, Westbrook. So those are always fun to see, and I know we've seen a lot from Mrs. Larson and Mrs. Cossey recently, but they, they are really um, doing a lot to benefit the kids here and the programs that they offer.
It's good to hear. Next superintendent comment.
Okay, I do have a few comments this evening, uh, I will, I will try to be brief. Uh, first of all, I would uh, echo Ms. Adams, I'd like to welcome you, and we are happy you are here. And we're almost to a point where you got your first one under your belt. Here's to many more, good ones, hopefully. Um, we've had a pretty, pretty good first couple of weeks. I thought we had a great kickoff, I thought convocation was uh, was, was really good this year. I thought uh, the message was clear uh, with regards to what, what our plans are here within Triwood Madison City Schools and what our focus is. Students first, one hundred percent, student success. I think that message was very clear, and I appreciate everyone that was able to attend, and I understand the grits with regard to not being able to attend, but I've heard uh, some really good feedback from not only the board members, but some of our other visitors that, that attended as well. So we're excited about the kickoff to the school year. Uh, in your packets, the first item I have is item A, document A, which is um, a summary of where we are with enrollment at this point. And as you can see, uh, from week one to week two, our enrollment has increased already. Sitting at twenty-six hundred and eight students enrolled now. Uh, throughout the year, this number does fluctuate uh, up and down. And uh, we're hopefully, if we, you know, if we settle around twenty-six hundred students, that is, that is an increase for enrollment for, for the year. With the anticipation, and I've shared this with uh, the cabinet and, and some other folks as well, with the anticipation of two major apartments, apartment complexes coming up in the spring. I've already had some conversation with the uh, the city of Triwood, and I'm meeting with them in the next couple of weeks. We're gonna have to start putting some planning in place for the anticipated number of kids that um, that will be uh, will be living in those apartment complexes. I've heard numbers anywhere from three hundred to a thousand. So we, we really don't know, and I'll be meeting with uh, City Manager Pope to kind of discuss what, what uh, those perspectives are with regards to those uh, to those kids. And you know, if we get, if we get between three hundred and thousand, if we get seven hundred or five hundred kids, that's a huge increase in enrollment in this district. And what we're gonna have to do is figure out where all these kids are gonna go. And uh, you know, that's gonna be some, um, some, definitely some logistical planning that's gonna take place with myself, uh, my staff, building principals specifically. But uh, if you've been past Castle Brook, Castle Brook is almost finished. And um, the, the one right here on, on Main Street, off of Main Street, it's up, it's framed, and, and they're gonna start siding and, and, and working on infrastructure here in a minute. But Castle Brook's almost finished, and there are gonna be tons of people that move into Castle Brook. City Manager Pope said Castle Brook will probably, spring, uh, don't anticipate anybody moving in until spring, but they're gonna start accepting applications and reviewing uh, reviewing tenants in January. So uh, you know, come this spring, we're, we're gonna have, we'll have another, uh, we're gonna have another housing complex in this district, and we're gonna have to prepare ourselves for, for that additional bump of students. We're sitting at twenty-six now, and we're, you know, we hit thirty-one or thirty-two hundred, you know, generally. You know, we're looking at numbers from, you know, from the early to late nineties with regards to what we have in this district, thirty-one, thirty-two hundred kids. And if you're around then, we had three more elementary schools. So um, we, we gotta do some brief, yeah, three. Three more, three of them, three more elementary schools. So uh, Brown, Moore, St. Olive, and Townville.
Olive Hill.
And Olive Hill, four more elementary schools. So we, we gotta figure out, you know, where these kids are gonna go. Now, our, our buildings now are built for a little higher number than we're currently occupying, so we, we, we think we'll be okay, but we just don't know what those numbers are. Y'all for bring them back, bro.
Townville.
So would that mean we will have to kind of like minimize the number of open enrollment students?
That is something we are definitely gonna have, have to look at, absolutely. That's a great question, great point, something. And, and we haven't even started having a discussion on, on our administrative level about that. Because increased enrollment definitely means increased income for the district. But you know, you gotta be able to put these kids in seats. You gotta be able to have computers for them, you gotta be able to have seats, desks, and space, and lunches. So uh, next year, this time next year.
Teachers.
Teachers, yeah, teachers, yeah, that's, that's true. Yeah, I forgot about all that. Yeah, that's, that's the most important thing. So uh, we are um, we'll see, we'll see, this is a, this is a uh, an unknown at this point.
Scary unknown.
A meeting on the twenty-fifth, with uh, September twenty-fifth, with, with, with Pope. And we're gonna sit down and we're gonna talk about, uh, try to get a little more detail with regards to that. Okay, next, in your folder, I have provided everyone uh, the colorful documents that are the calendars for the, for the current school year. You've got a updated school calendar, and then you also have a middle school and high school fall sports calendar. I wanted to make sure everybody had a copy of those. So please, uh, if you need another copy, if you lose this one, let me know, I can send you one digitally. But this is the current calendar for, for the school year. Also at your desk in that envelope, you should have a paparazzi pen. Did you guys receive one of those?
Put mine on.
Okay.
Thank you, Ashley.
Yeah, if you were at the um, yeah, the convocation ladies that were, I mean, the folks that were at the convocation, you saw that Ms. Anderson uh, did, along with Ms. Murdock, they did a presentation on our social media presence that is taking place here in the district, and we're really excited about that. And all of those folks that contributed a certain number of, of posts, certain number of con, certain numbers, a certain number of content submissions, they received a Triwood Madison paparazzi pen. So we are celebrating them. And with that, I wanted to just lead into real quickly the updated website. So as we discussed a few meetings ago, we have transitioned our website to a new platform. It is active, it is still under content construction, but it is active as of, of maybe about three weeks ago. So what you see now is you see some really high, cool, high-definition pictures that, that move, uh, that, that scroll. So we've got a lot of pictures of, of kids doing some really great things, some really innovative things. And then if you scroll down a little bit for me, it also has a, a lot of uh, different tabs that you can use. One of those tabs is our direct feed from our social media platforms. So as you are, as we're putting content out on Instagram or Facebook, it directly is populated through uh, through the website, so people can see some of the things that are going on. Keep scrolling a little bit for me. And then there are all of the exciting things that are going on, all of the activities that are going on, that's all our first week stuff. And then there's a changing menu of first, excuse me, upcoming events. Scroll down a little bit for me, those will scroll over, those are all of the by-the-numbers data. It gives you the number of buildings we have, number of kids, uh, students, that needs to be updated. As you can see, we have uh, some updated numbers, staff members. And then each building has a page, we've done a pretty good job of updating everybody's page. And on those pages, those new pages, you will see the um, the buildings, you know, the principal will ultimately have a message. The district will have a, uh, excuse me, the buildings will have a, a mission statement with regards to what's going on in the buildings, we're working on all those, got some great high-definition pictures. So we're really excited about what's going on in the uh, what's going on in the buildings and some of the uh, the information that we're gonna start putting out via social media and on the new web platform. So still under construction, working with Ms. Anderson to try to get all of that content up and loaded. But uh, we're excited about that new webpage. We've gotten a lot of, uh, a lot of uh, positive remarks from, from some local superintendents who were being nosey and their internet creeping and looking at our webpage and saying, oh, Howard, you've got a new website over there. So, so we're excited about that. So all of the principals' messages, everything will be updated. I work, we're gonna be working with our staff to make sure we get, you know, current pictures of the current content on the webpage. All right?
Somebody that's gonna maintain it and keep up.
So, that's a great question, Mrs. Anderson serves as the point for that. But the company that we contract work directly with her, contract with, the company works directly with her to uh, to uh, to work through the, work through her, yeah. It, it, it would be uh, it would be more than a notion for somebody to be a webmaster, you know, along with some of the other roles and strengths. But that is not a, a, a heavy expense, it's not a heavy expense.
Yeah, you need some of that.
We'll get that in the next finance meeting.
Where you can pay, you can pay seven thousand or eight thousand dollars for that, and Ashley doing her job and other stuff. Or we can hire somebody for fifty-five thousand dollars to do, you know, that, or forty-five, fifty-five thousand dollars for insurance and healthcare. Only to get the things, but we can always talk about that. All right? And those are the only items I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Next up, board comments. Mrs. Carrington.
Welcome, Ms. Adams, I want to welcome you to your first meeting. Um, I want to say um, the back-to-school badge was phenomenal. So I want to thank that committee who put that on, that was a great way to kick off the school year. Followed up by the Convocation Committee, it was really awesome. Um, it was, the breakfast was really first-class, so um, whoever put that on, thank you, it was amazing. Um, Mr. White, I think, I thought your presentation was phenomenal, um, a lot of good information. And um, I have a little one, so I'm hoping to go, to go home and tell my daughter all about it. And welcome back, you guys have survived almost the second week, complete week of school, so I hope you're still got a lot of gas to go, 'cause you got a long way to go. Um, and just welcome back, hi, because this is our first meeting, so it's good to see y'all again. Oh, and the Open House, I must say, I had a great time at Open House. When I got to um, Madison Park, it was amazing to see so many parents. Then when I went over to the middle school, I was surprised, it was, I could not believe just how Then when I went over to the middle school, I was surprised, it was, I could not believe just how, how many people came out. The high school, so phenomenal. And great job, um, Tracy, you and your crew with the fans at convocation. I did. I'll meet you there next year. But that's all I have.
Mr. Lumpkin?
It looks like I lost the bet to Deion Simmons about the number of words. Mrs. Carrington will have tonight, so. But that's all right, bro. The first thing I wanna say is, uh, congratulations, Jill, and good job on your first meeting, and, and way to not get mad at Sonson for calling you Miss Adams, you've been doing that for a long time. Uh, welcome back to our students and to our staff. Uh, the one thing that I say about convocation was that the energy from all of the buildings was just amazing. And you can, you can really see why you guys are having the success that you're having because of the energy and the enthusiasm from all of you guys that are working with our students. So, just excited to see, um, how that progresses throughout the year. And then my favorite time of year is here, football season tomorrow night. Don't forget, that Charles Madison plays against Cleveland Heights in one of only three home games this season. So, everybody come out and support the Rams, and they start their new season. Oh, thank you, uh, some of the ELC students for giving me this cool T-shirt.
Wow.
Our kindergarten football team gave me, the kindergarten first-grade football team gave me this shirt. They call themselves The Dark Side. I like Star Wars, so I, I supported them tonight at the board meeting wearing the T-shirt.
Nice, nice. That's nice. Vice President, Mrs. Simmons.
Again, welcome, Ms. Adams, um, you know, you, you're off to a great start, and you said about twenty days in our meeting earlier today, so welcome your first twenty days. Um, the back-to-school event was phenomenal, um, as always, staff did a great job on that. Um, thanks to, uh, Mr. Bean, um, I sent a message to him yesterday, he got back with, with me this morning. Um, the marching band will be performing at the Twenty-Fifth Annual African-American Wellness Walk, presented by Premier, on Saturday, September the thirteenth. So, come out and support our marching band at the African-American Wellness Walk. Um, thanks to both of the teachers who are already on their feet and receiving grants for both the arts and science program, um, we're off to a great start. Welcome back to all of our teachers and staff and our families. Um, I generally walk on the track in the mornings, and just the enthusiasm of the kids, I can hear it when I'm out walking. Um, the parents are getting the kids in on time, I, I try to pay attention to some of that stuff. So, we are off to a great school year, and so welcome back, everyone, and I hope you did something for yourselves over the summer. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Vice President. Um, I just want to, you know, with everyone else has said, I thought the convocation was extremely, um, well put together, the back-to-school bash, um, unfortunately, I missed the open house, but, um, I've only heard great things. Um, I just want to say congratulations to Mrs. Adams, um, in your new role. Uh, thank you, Mr. White, we've been playing, not phone tag, we're kinda like phone tag, emailing, texting back and forth, but thank you for coming to our board meeting and presenting, um, some valuable information, um, about your program. Thank you so very much. Um, just everyone, like they said, the enthusiasm, I just love it, I love it. We all matter, we all matter, and, um, so I appreciate everyone, welcome back, welcome back, and welcome back. We gotta get prepared to put our boots on the ground for our students, but I think we're off to a good start. So, again, thank you. And with that, I will need a motion to enter into executive session to consider the appointment, the employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official, licensed, or regulated individual per B O E Policy Zero One Six Six and O R C One Two One Point Two Two G One, action may be taken.
I move.
That's second. Mrs. Adams has been moved in second, would you please call the row?
Yes, Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes, motion passes, we will enter into executive session at seven oh five.